Would I call this council meeting of November, or December 5th, 2016 to order please? Roll call.
Seven, here, Kathy.
Here.
Bill.
Yeah. We need a motion to accept the minutes from the November meeting, please.
Excuse me, there should be a correction to the minutes. At the November meeting, we didn't accept the July minutes, we accepted the October minutes. So that's just a wording thing, but it should be October. With that correction, I move that they be approved as planned.
Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. We need a motion to approve the warrants and payroll timesheets, please. Motion made. Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Need a motion to approve the interest transfer, please.
And if the interest be transferred to the appropriate funds.
Second. Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Susan's not here, I'm bringing it up to speed, I talked with Ron Morgan today, hopefully he's gonna get started up there at the schoolhouse by the weekend, depending on how the weather goes, as far as starting to cut the track in, because we're getting under a time crunch to get this done and get it finalized by the end of the year, so an alternative to the state versus Susan by the 20th, so we're getting down to the nitty gritty here on here, but hopefully he gets there this week, so.
Is that all the way around?
Yeah. Yeah, gonna go, gonna come down along the dish here in front of your house, but next to the, on the school lane up there by the parking, we'll come along the grass there, come down around the new shelter, go down on the hill, up above the sidewalk in front of school, down across the driveway down on the south end, go back around the old ballpark backstop, gonna come up along that hill back there, and we'll go through the fence up there on the old playground, there it is.
So the fence will have to be trimmed off.
Yeah, after you tore down, threw out some trees in there, but the path through there.
That's kinda where I was going.
And then once they get up to the bus barn area, they'll be back on the hard surface, and they walk the hard surface back over to where we started over there, so.
Yeah, that's, I was, that's kinda where I was going, back there with the old playground.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll be coming up through there, so hopefully, like I said, hopefully the weather holds up and we get started this week, and even kind of busy, but we're under the timeframe, so if he's not gonna be able to do it, we're gonna have to look at alternatives, because we're gonna get this done.
We always buy equipment and store it.
Well, we can rent equipment, we have to.
Well, as far as that, we're stuck, I mean, stuck on doing the run track right now, but we can't get it done till spring. We can get part equipment later, whatever, and spend that money and store it.
Yeah, hopefully we can get that done by the 20th, so.
Yes.
See what happens. With us tonight, I've already introduced our solicitor, Jacob Kovac, is here this evening. I think everyone's familiar with him, any questions anybody would have, or Mr. Kovac, do you have anything that you would like to say?
No, I just brought a copy of the backflow prevention ordinance.
And we'll get to that. Okay, all right, thank you, sir, for being here.
Yeah.
Committee reports, safety chief.
We handed 107 calls for service, made 17 inquiries, three arrests, six citations, and issued 29 warrants.
Anything else, chief?
Actually, I forgot about it, but maybe they handed it to me just a little bit, just enjoy it, I mean.
Yeah, I got yours.
I think it's the boss in there.
Yeah, I got yours, so. We can go ahead and take care of that now. We need to read this in its entirety or just entitled?
It's just mutual aid.
I have read it, there are a few changes, a lot of it is just to make the language correct, there's a change where they've added some legal language to go along with the revised code, and there is also, they dispensed with a rule in there that said that police officers working more than eight hours, did you see that, Chair? Would be paid $6 overtime rate, and I figure nobody wants that anyway, so that's been dispensed with, I'm sure if officers work more, they'll turn their time in, so.
Basically, this is just mutual aid between police departments, out of the county and stuff, if something disastrous or whatever takes place, it allows us to go over there and them to come over here, basically what this is. This is just an agreement, so I think we can read this in title only.
I believe so, it's not, as I said, a lot of it's just language that's been changed to bring it up to date.
What's the timeframe on, Chair, a year, two years, or?
Basically, until it gets renewed. Yeah, basically, it's just definitely until it gets renewed. They, if we see that this is a wording change, then they're gonna have the old, have the old radio.
The old radio, I see.
And change it to the Marx radio, or is it gonna become this one, the Marx radio? Doesn't change that.
The council prefer to do it in title or read the whole thing?
Title, it's larger, I'm sure.
Okay, this is a revised mutual aid agreement, Chair Chief, please close, please fund the revised, please, mutual aid agreement of which your department is a member, agreement has been updated to include C A L E eight requirements, this revised mutual agreement must be approved and signed by your legislative authority, board of trustees, city council, et cetera, and returned to this office by January 6th, 2017. I would need a motion to, to accept this agreement, mutual aid agreement?
I believe we accept the agreement mutually.
Second. Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Yes. Building?
I have one thing either on building four, or whatever you prefer, sir. Direct energy from the D P N L, and Integrity Energy is trying to negotiate new prices for the village, even though we're still under a current aggregation system, and I've got the prices from Integrity, but it doesn't include the residents, it's just our commercial and our village stuff that we have now, and I'm trying to find out if that's gonna make a difference on what the entire village has to pay because of the aggregation system. D P N L, they called me today because I was out of town, so I've got to get back with them, but I want to let council know that we're being approached with new figures and for when our aggregation ends, and if we do switch before the end, it will be penalized $150 per contract that we have, and I think Mandy, we said we had 12, just ourselves, that we would have to pay that $150, but Integrity seems to think that they can tack on the price at the end of our contract, which is about a penny less than what we're paying now, but it doesn't do the residents any good, it does us a good, but it doesn't do the residents any good, so I'm trying to work out a plan where I can get both the residents and our own stuff on board, you know, because we're all on board with the same price now.
Okay, now the government, integrity called me this afternoon, started running off on the phone about me having a meeting with somebody Friday, whoa, 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 I haven't talked to anybody, I don't know what you're talking about here, so, and I do know our aggregate is coming due, I think, we're good until May?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
We thought it was seventeen.
Oh, so we got, we got a lot of time.
Manny and I have pinned to that, and we thought it was seventeen, but once we dig into a little deeper, we got a hint, it's an eighteen, so.
Like I said, the little bit that they're offering us, I do know that D P N L energy, we will not get a renewal at the end of our term for D P N L energy next time, like, we will probably have to choose another aggregate, because D P N L energy has got away from this, but they're honoring the contract, to my understanding from Ron, or Mr. Whoa, what's his name, Singleton, no, that's not right, anyway.
But they're gonna, they're gonna opt out of the deal.
Yeah, I believe, that's my understanding from Mr. Robert, gosh, I can't remember the name, anyway, I'm pretty sure that's, my last conversation with him was that, so we have plenty of time to choose, but I think, I, I agree with you that, you know, we want to include the whole village, not just us, and this, because in the past, when we got into the streetlight thing and everything, we had quite a significant savings, savings for the village, I think the last number we looked at about a year ago was like $300 and some thousand dollars, the village had saved, or somewhere along that range, so, yeah.
So hopefully I can bring some exact figures to the table first.
Great, yeah, that guy's a little pushy.
Yeah, he is, yeah, he wants us to lock him in right away.
Yeah, yeah.
But he's a typical salesman.
Yeah, exactly. All right, thank you, Ralph. Streets?
The only thing I've got on the streets is, I think they, I think they're finished, the way I understand it, they did go around and repair the manhole covers, which they were terrible, and they did a good job, they did it right, and I think if everybody looks, it looks pretty good, and it's pretty smooth, so, far as I know, they're done.
Great, and the state didn't come in to do that, so.
Yeah, it cost us. But we had to complain a little bit because of the manhole covers.
Exactly.
Tried it a little once, and.
Yeah. All right, anything else, Ralph, on the streets?
That's it.
Lights?
Nothing on those.
Okay, thank you. Finance, we've got a temporary budget that we need to approve so we can make payroll to the end of the year.
Well, after the end of the year, until we get the new budget in place, this will just be an interim document to cover, and it's, it's close to what we're gonna be doing for the actual budget for 2017, but until we have the year-end figures, we can't pass that, so keep things running, so I will move the approval of a temporary 2017 tax budget.
Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Sanitation? Planning, don't know what you mean. B P A, we have a, B P A has asked for an ordinance on backflow prevention. Correct, what this ordinance form, correct, and this would be ordinance number?
Seven, 2016.
This is ordinance number seven, 2016, backflow prevention. If an adjustment of superintendent of water and approval of backflow prevention device is necessary for the safety of the public water system, the superintendent of water will give notice to the water customer and to install such an approved device immediately. The water consumer shall, at his own expense, install such approved device at a location in a manner approved by the superintendent of water, and shall have an annual inspection and test of such approved devices. B, no person, firm, or corporation shall establish or permit to be established or maintained or permit to be maintained by any connected, any connection whereby a private auxiliary or emergency water supply other than the regular public water supply of the village may enter the supply of the distributing, distributing system of the municipality. Unless such private auxiliaries are emergency water supply and the method of connection and use of such supply shall have to be approved by the superintendent of water. Three, the superintendent of water shall cause survey and investigative investigations made of industrial and other properties serviced by the public water supply where actual or potential hazards to the public water supply may exist. Such survey and investigation shall be made in manner of public record and shall be repeated as often as the superintendent deems necessary. D, the superintendent of water shall have the right to enter at any reasonable time any property certified in connection to the public water system or distribution system of the village for the purpose of inspecting the piping system or systems thereof. Before entering, the superintendent shall give the owner, leasing, or occupant of the property to be inspected 24 hours' notice of such said inspection. On demand, the owner, leasing, or occupant of any property, so shall, so served, shall furnish to the superintendent any information which he may request regarding the piping system or the supply of water used on such property. The refusal of such information, when demanded, shall, within the discretion of the superintendent, be deemed evidence of the presence of improper conditions, connections, as prohibited in this section. E, the superintendent of water is hereby authorized and directed to disconnect, discontinue after three-day written notice to the occupant thereof, the water service to any property wherein any connections in violation of the provisions of this section is known to exist and to take such precautionary measures as he may deem necessary to eliminate any danger of contamination of the public water supply distribution mains. Water service to such property shall not be restored until such conditions shall be eliminated or corrected in compliance with the provision of this section. F, any backflow prevention device installed prior to December 5th, 2016, is considered an approved backflow prevention device for the purpose of this section until said backflow prevention device fails and the water superintendent, the superintendent of water determines a new device is required. Notification, payments, or fees, or contamination, or isolation, backflow prevention, consequences of failure. The superintendent of water shall issue notice to the customer of the owner, the agent, or the person in charge of the premises wherein a contamination or isolated backflow device is located of the need to perform an annual contamination and/or isolation device backflow test. Superintendent of water may charge a fee for said notice. Failure to have the contamination or isolated backflow test done or failure to provide results to the superintendent of water shall result in the termination of water services. A failure to pay the required fees or charges may result in the superintendent of water terminating water services. The termination of water service for failure to pay required fees or charges shall comport with the village of new parish rules and regulations regarding termination of service for non-payment of such said billing. Any water service terminated by this section shall be restored, shall not be restored until such conditions have been eliminated or corrected in compliance with this section. What this is, on some, some, some industrial properties or restaurants and stuff like that, you have a backflow where you don't get contamination back into their water supply, so we don't have an ordinance really in place to justify or to take care of this problem now, so B P A has requested the council put this in as an ordinance for the future, as spoke, the ones that's already had done, their, their need approved, but in the future, anyone that has to put a, a backflow device in, they'll have to, they'll have to meet with the superintendent of water, put the device in, and from that point forward, there'll be an annual inspection of that that they'll have to do, sign off on it, turn it into the, add to this, to the superintendent of water here at the plant, to make sure we're not getting any backflow contamination into our main water source. B P A, anything to add to that?
No, we just think it's a group move for the village.
I would need a motion to pass ordinance, ordinance seven, ordinance seven of 2016, please.
Motion made.
Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. I'd like a motion to, for go to the free reading, rule passes the mercy, please.
Motion made.
Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Also, while we're on the B P A, we've run into a situation, and I'll ask B P A if they've had time to ponder this, is what they wanna do, we're having situations where we have landlords, and we have tenants, and the landlords don't want to disclose what the water bill is to the tenants, and the tenants are asking for disclosure, so we need to come up with something where we are protected, but Mandy's protected. Has B P A decided on what they'd like to do with this?
We've been and talked with Mr. Kovac, but I'm not sure that we came up with our final decision yet.
Point I made to them is municipal water accounts, well, it's not a public record, so if you have someone, I liken the situation to me having credit for our bills, someone can come in and see what my bill is, or what I'm spending it on, so what I advised them was, I would give some kind of disclaimer from the landlords that gives authorization for tenants to have the information. It's my understanding that landlord comes in and provides information as to who's leasing the property, and I don't see why we could just add an extra statement to cover the village, because I'm concerned that someone at some point can sue the village for giving out, but they need to be their private information, it's their, it's their part, it's in their hands, and we shouldn't be giving information to anyone who doesn't have authorization to have it.
But I have a question, are the bills going to the renters?
No.
No.
They are not, all bills go to the property owner?
Not all of them. It's just a sense that they come in and they put the bill in.
Where the water gets a little muddy. We've just started to kinda delve into this.
Yeah.
Pretty sure. We've had landlords come in and said that we make previous payment arrangements with tenants that we're not here to, and ultimately, the landlord's held responsible to make sure if they're the property owner, they're on the hook for the water bill, so we just passed the measure where any payment agreement made with a tenant would have to be approved by the landlord, so we're just starting to kinda delve into this stuff.
We have a form now, that when you, when you're, if you're a landlord, you rent your property, and you come, come down, you gotta sign a form, you gotta list who's living there, and we already have that in place, and that way, if they move out, the landlord is ultimately responsible for the bill, the bill's not paid, even if the bill is going to the renter, and the renter leaves, then ultimately, the landlord has to pay that water bill, so when they come down and sign that form, the landlord signs the form, the tenant signs the form, and it's, and it's, and then you know who's in that property, so, and a couple of things, it keeps people from leaving this property, moving to another property, and doing the same thing, because then you know you have a record of people that's doing that, so that's been in place for some time, rather than since you was, and maybe before you was on the B P A board. So the problem being now is we have some landlords that's angry that their tenants are being told what the water bill is, and in most cases, it's because landlords are telling them it's more than it really is, so we have to protect ourselves and we don't give them out the information, and I agree with Mr. Kovac, I think the simple way to be used for them to put that on the agreement, and the landlord and the tenant signs that, and if neither wants to sign that, I guess they don't get the water, would be my opinion, but that's up to B P A.
You know, I don't know, we haven't affirmatively came to a decision, but I understand Mr. Kovac's the mayor's line of thinking, and I'm sure we'll probably arrive at that, but I can't speak for my other counterparts, but Chris, if you have something to add?
No, just something we've discussed enough, looked into enough to make a final decision. Okay, that's fine, just bringing to attention everybody's, what's going on, thank you.
Let me bring up something else, get on that.
There's a tenant here in town that's charging, I mean, there's a landlord here in town that's charging the tenants above and beyond the amount of water that sewer is used at that facility, and they're not even giving the information to the tenant as to how many gallons or anything about that, they're just going to this particular residence and saying, you know X number of dollars for water and sewer, even when the tenant asks for some type of numbers, gallons, whatever, because they know what our minimum rates are, the landlord will not give them that, and this is happening to several tenants in this facility, of multiple tenants, and I didn't know whether there was anything there that B P A could do, even though that was one meter, and I realize it's only one meter that goes in that the landlord pays, pays his part, but the tenants feel like that they're being gouged because of that situation, and they get no information from the landlord as to how many gallons they've used, they don't understand why they don't have a, you know, some kind of idea of what they owe.
Ralph, this is something we think that we've heard in places, I don't know if we're talking about the same place, but I think we are, about the same situation, and again, we're just now kinda looking into this, and the other implications for this landlord, and how he's running this water situation, so that's something we do.
And I realize he's paying the village what he owes the village.
Kinda takes us out of it.
But the poor tenants are sitting there saying they're getting gouged, and they don't know what to do.
Yes.
And they don't know whether to give to lawyer, go to civil court, whether to, what to do, and I'm, I'm trying to give them information back of what they might be able to do, but I can't answer their questions.
We've gotten, they don't have the feedback, so. Mr. Kovac, I'm ready to discuss that with you.
I do, too. I think the village should try to stay out of the situation, I think you should all, really, it's a civil matter, and these individuals should seek legal explanation.
Well, that was my suggestion to the tenants also, so we're all, we're on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution in 2014, a resolution to realign the permanent appropriations, resolution by modifying the following appropriations from one account within, to another within the fund, this is something we do all the time for Mandy, so she can.
Keep a books where it's right.
I would need a motion to accept resolution 2016 dash 14, please.
Motion made.
2014 dash?
2016 dash 14.
Okay.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes. We need a motion for go to the free reading, rule passes the mercy, please.
Wait, wait.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sasha, Kathy.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes. Okay, Mandy has year-end training tomorrow in Columbus, so their office will be closed. And under new business, employees insurance, B P A, have you had a chance to look at the new chart that, you know, we had, we have been informed that, you know, being down to one person, they were gonna throw us out as a group, but they have since, Mandy has since got that revised with the company, with a company that's gonna accept us, I don't know if B P A's had a chance to look at the numbers or not.
We have, and we've also, I think it's proven, it's a proven council attention, we've had an employment issue with B P A, one, as you know, Ed Van Zandt turned in his notice and worked his last day yesterday, moved on to another opportunity, so we are gonna have to hire another employee. We were also notified in our last council meeting, there was a possibility that Rick Snyder could retire at the law, and that really puts us at a precipice because of him being a certified operator and such, so we were really concerned about the situation, and then the insurance on top of that, it's quite a mess. I was fortunate enough to meet with Rick Snyder, and Mandy had shared these rates with us, and upon seeing these rates, Rick Snyder shared with me, and he said, it was okay, I share with you, that if we were to ratify this new insurance policy through Anthem, that he thinks that he could stay additional three to five years, so this played a big factor on whether he would, were to retire or not. One policy option he did cite is, if you're looking at the same table I am, it would be the first one in the table with the estimated monthly premium of 1,753, he believes that's better than all the private insurance that he's investigated for himself. Based on the information I have, I believe that premium represents a savings to the village compared to what we were paying prior, but I think that was in the 1,800 dollar range, so we just wanna let the council know that we believe that if we are ratified this new insurance policy, that not only will we retain Rick Snyder, it will help us as we try to recruit a new employee to take it to Van Zandt's law.
I think the co-pays on this are a little higher, and he's seen that, though.
He's seen that, and we didn't have any pushback on it. We have received a couple resumes and applications, and we'll be working with the mayor to set up interviews, if schedule permits, we'd like to, as we try to hire a new employee to replace Eddie.
Are you looking for somebody certified now?
That's something we have to weigh out. At the time, we believed that there was a possibility that Mr. Snyder retired, absolutely, I didn't think we had another option, but now, if he can make a commitment to stay on with us, that gives us a little attitude, but no matter what candidate we identify, we wanna be implicit that they are working towards certification, and we might even, as we discuss salary, incentivize that, to see that they do, because in the future, we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Where was the deduction on the individual before?
Um, Greg was at 15, 18, 78, four. As a renewal, if we wouldn't have. As a renewal, if we wouldn't have been discontinued, it would have been up to fifteen ninety-seven eighty-five.
I was asking the deductible last policy.
Family was fifteen hundred for no one, and seven fifty for a single. So, it was a fifteen hundred.
Good. I think the maximum out pockets is a little higher, isn't it?
Uh, it was a ten thousand.
Well, the council like to do with this, because we need to get this in place this evening, because we've run out of January first. We are dropped from the other policy.
And to maintain coverage for Mr. Snyder, he has to make a commitment to his agent by the leave December fourteenth.
Yes.
To have no gap in coverage, so time is up the essence of that.
I move we accept the Anthem Plan number one.
Is there a second on that? A second, yeah. Roll call, please.
Sasha, Paul, Kathy, yes, Ralph.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody have anything else? Would you like to bring it to the board today? If not, thank you, Mr. Kovac, for showing up this evening and introducing yourself to council. The next meeting will be January ninth, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock. I would need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion made.
For a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas to everyone.